That sounds like an incredible amount of money to prove that. How come that costs so much?
That is the sum total of the pipeline integrity work that was conducted between 2001 and 2024, or thereabouts.
So it's spread over 23 years of work. Okay.
That's, that's right.
Okay.
Imagine you've got this 576 kilometer length of transmission pipe, which is buried two meters below the ground. And so you run inspection tools through the pipe to identify anomalies, potential defects, stresses and cracks. And then you need to go and dig up that section of pipe, inspect it in situ and repair it as applicable.
Okay. Thanks for that answer. That makes sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Councillor Raven.
So like what was mentioned, the presentation makes a lot of sense. But what I hear from a lot of people when they're looking at their PNG bill is that there's a whole bunch of fees on top of it. And I believe that there's even a delivery fee. So like, what's the difference between like regular maintenance and delivery then? Because it just seems a bit overwhelming to like when you look at a bill and it's almost double because of what the fees are.
Yeah, bills are certainly hard to read if you're not used to them. There's no question there. So Amanda, maybe I'll start and perhaps you can, you can finish here. All of the costs related to operating and maintaining the pipeline are then reflected in the delivery charge. So every customer on the PNG West system will, whether you're residential, commercial or industrial, will pay a portion of those maintenance and operating costs in the delivery charge. And then the commodity charge is for how many gigajoules of gas are actually consumed. Hopefully that makes sense. And then there are some unique riders, some other little provisions. Just that's the stuff around the edges. And that deals with things like variances. So you can have variances in weather and you can have variances in load. And sometimes it's higher and sometimes it's lower. And so PNG uses those kinds of rider accounts to smooth things out. So that you're not exposed to the highs or the lows, you just kind of pay the average.
Any other counsel? Councillor Patterson.
Thank you, your worship. So I just want to thank you both for being here today. And just the essential service that you provide to our communities. And obviously I see a lot of what PNG does for our community through charitable donations and sponsorship. So I just want to thank you. So I have a couple of questions, so I'll just list them and then I can repeat any if you need me to. So when I read the assessment, I was just a bit confused on how it seems that predominantly residential consumers will offset some of the struggles that we're seeing. So I was just curious if you could comment on how much industry, meaning outside of small businesses, will see potential rate increases? That's my first question. And would you prefer that I ask my question and then pause and then ask the second, or do you want me to?
Yeah, perhaps. If you, if you wouldn't mind, I can, I can deal with that, that first question first. First of all, thank you for the kind words. That's, that's very generous of you. The, the rate increases for delivery charges are calculated as a, as a percentage. And the percentage applies equally to residential, commercial and industrial rates. The rates are set from a different starting point. So residential delivery charges are already higher than the commercial charges. The commercial charges are higher than the industrial charges. But all of those rates are then increased by the same percentage that we've applied for in the revenue requirements application.
Thank you, your worship. And the reason why I asked that question is I, we obviously live predominantly in a natural resource sector driven region. So I just wanted to understand, making sure that it wasn't just obviously residents who were being impacted. So you state that PNG remains optimistic about the addition of new large customer loads. And I recognize that's obviously been a significant impact, if not the most significant impact. So I was just curious if you could provide more detail around sort of risk mitigation should this not occur before 2028? And if there's anything that you think that municipalities can be doing to help to support? Yeah.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Great question. So I'm optimistic by nature. And what I, what I can share with folks is that we have seen an uptick in growth over the last number of years. And the forward looking book is, is actually looking really good. That demand chart that had that tale of whoa, where load was high and dropping, dropping, dropping. If we were to continue that out a couple of years, you'd see a resurgence in some loads. This is public information. So I can share, we've, we've signed a, a gas service arrangement with AltaGas for the Ridley Island Energy Export Facility. Councillor Ray will be happy. And, and they're going to, they're going to take some, some incremental gas starting in 2026. We're working with other proponents in Prince Rupert. That really is a hub of activity. Now, those are big loads to PNG, but they're not as big as the Methanex type loads. Those ones are in the liquefaction for, you know, kind of LNG facilities, liquefaction where they use natural gas for feedstock. And natural gas is feedstock for power generation. Those are the two significant opportunities that I get lots of knocks on the door for. And we are actively exploring those two opportunities. In terms of perhaps what the municipality can do, there are demand side management programs for residential, commercial and industrial customers. I would encourage you, if, if you haven't yet looked at some of your facilities, we do have some modest amounts of funding. We can look at some, some studies potentially to identify where there might be some efficiencies in your own facilities. And also if you're out in the community and speaking to folks, I'd encourage you to let them know that we have the Power Smart equivalent, which is called our Smart Energy Solutions Program.
And I think you worship, last question if I can. So if you could just provide a little bit more clarity around the changing regulatory framework. So I just struggled a little bit with that. Full disclosure, I've worked in the natural resource sector for over 20 years, predominantly in major projects in this region. So when I read that, I was just a bit curious. I think it's a hard, it's hard to understand when you hear sometimes industry will say, well, the, the regulatory requirements are so strict, when in fact I actually see the province now fast tracking a lot of those things to help stimulate our economy. So if you could just provide a little bit more clarity, that would be extremely helpful. Thank you.
You cranked up the temperature on the heat, so I'm going to send this, send this one over to you, Amanda.
Around the change in the regulatory requirements, I'm assuming we're talking about in, in respect of the work required on our pipeline. Is that the reference we're talking about?
Correct, yes. That was stated as a reason within the letter for the change in the rate increases.
Yeah. And so, and you know, I don't profess to be the operational expert of the company. But what I will say is, as David mentioned, that when the Enbridge Pipeline had the explosion a number of years ago, it's not necessarily like the, the legislation changed, but what changed was the expectation of the regulator around the amount of integrity related work that you would do in order to maintain pressures on your pipeline. And so we experienced the order that required us to do the work in order to maintain our, our current pressure. And so I think that's what we're referencing in our letter when we're talking about regulatory requirements is the increased scrutiny by the technical regulator, which is the BC Energy Regulator around how we maintain our pipeline.
Just looking this way before I go back to councillor Ray. We're good? Councillor Ray?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, so the, the numbers that you've put in for the next few years, did those include those larger customers coming online or is that still speculative at this time? And, and then just if they do come online and it wasn't in the numbers, could we expect that since the load's being shared a little more with larger customers, that there's, that everybody might see a, a lower rate?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. So the applications for a three-year period, calendar 2025, 2026 and 2027, and it includes the AltaGas demand and revenue starting in Q3 of 2026. It doesn't include any other customers that we're actively engaged with, but that we have not yet contracted for service.
David, can I add that, you know, you asked whether you would see revenue requirement decreases, like depending on the size and magnitude of the customer, to the extent that there was variances arising from new customer contracting, we would look to flow those benefits back to rate pairs, whether it's in this three-year period or in 2028 to ensure rates, you know, rates get the benefit of those dollars then.
We plug revenues and costs into that equation. And so if revenues go up and costs go down, or if revenue goes up and costs are held, then rates recover or return the difference.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. I just have a, a couple of questions, I think. One is near the beginning of the presentation, you talked about the difference between PNG West in terms of the transmission line and the Northeast area where you described it as a distribution system. Maybe you could just talk a little bit about that. And, you know, if there weren't, the follow-up to that, I guess, is if there weren't successes with the major load customers, how does the future look for, you know, it's residential customers primarily that we've been hearing from. What, what might that look like? And perhaps a little bit on the history of why the difference?
Yeah, yeah. Perhaps I'll speak to the infrastructure and Amanda, if you want to layer in some comments on, on the differences. Think of it simply as twice as much pipe. So you've got, on the electricity system, you've got big transmission lines and then you have the distribution lines. So the PNG West system has transmission pipe, which moves large volumes of gas. And that transmission pipe then serves the distribution pipe, which supplies natural gas to the communities. That's the PNG West system. The Northeast system does not have that incremental, almost 600 kilometer length of 55-year-old transmission pipe. It just has smaller distribution pipe to operate and maintain. That's the significant difference. I guess I should also add, Amanda, that when you've got a transmission system, we have compressors. And so the PNG West system includes the compressors that push the gas through that transmission pipe. Whereas again, in the Northeast, we're receiving high-pressure gas from large transmission pipelines, folks like Enbridge.
Yes, thanks, David. So maybe what I would add, and I think I'll respond to the part of the question that I, I heard at the beginning, which is, what if the new customer load doesn't come online and, and how is that different in the West? And what I would say is, you know, PNG's proposal for the West in this revenue requirement application, we, we're calling it a reset. And what I mean by that is there's been a lot of hope of the next big load. But what we want to do is set PNG up for stable and predictable rates in the future. And a big chunk of this is dealing with all the volatility that happened in the last number of years with customers coming on and declining loads and that, that kind of variance and recover those costs. I kind of liken it to a credit card debt. You know, pay the credit card debt, avoid the interest in the carrying costs and set yourself up with a clean slate going forward so that you're not, you're not just always paying interest. And I, I think that, that's my simplified, not exactly precise view, but you know, we're, we're calling it a reset. So that if, if we don't sign a new customer in the next three years, we're setting ourselves up to give customers certainty in the next test period so that they won't be seeing this magnitude of rate increase.
Thanks.
This is why in our third year, in our third year, we actually fixed the rate increase to five percent to show that, to show we mean it. We will be held to that rate. We won't increase rates once we get past these two high years.
Thanks. Maybe the last, you know, is the long-term future for the Western line. And it's maybe embedded just in a thought process that says, you know, for our citizens, residential customers sometimes, not just with this utility, but they pay a higher rate. You reference that. And that's true across other utilities as well. And so it might just be the question about, you know, for folks who may be listening or watching, like, why is it that a residential customer has to pay a higher amount? And, you know, through a system, I, I understand physically what you're saying, that, you know, in, for some customers, they're closer to source. They don't need the long lines. But if you have an entire system, why would those costs not be shared more fairly across the line? You know, we could think about it with our own systems, that if you're close to the well, you pay the same amount as if you're further from the well. Like, you know, there are times where you rationalize the costs in order to generate fairness for people. So those two things. Thanks.
It's a great question, Mayor Atro. And perhaps I'll just pull on my BC Hydro experience. I was with BC Hydro for 20 years before I joined PNG. And it, it's the difference between having a regional system and a province-wide system. So BC Hydro, for instance, has wires all over the province in major load centers as well as in the regions. It has an undersea cable that goes over to Sir Vancouver Island. If BC Hydro had regional rates, you would pay two or three times as much for your electricity. BC Hydro doesn't. They have a province-wide system and so they can socialize the higher cost areas with the lower cost areas. So everyone pays that one pancake flat rate. PNG only has a regional system. And, and we struggle with that. Part of the advocacy work that Amanda and I do with the province is to help folks in Victoria understand that the North is different, that the North is cold and that this is a regional system. And that it is unfair, in our view, for folks in the North to have to pay so much more for the critical energy that we deliver. We think it's unfair. We would love to see a different approach taken by the province and, and that effect, it's almost like a northern tax and, and we don't like it.
Thanks, folks. I don't, I'm not seeing any of their hands unless I've missed something. Funny sounds back there. Thank you for making time to come and speak to us. We do appreciate it. And to take the time to hear the questions, it creates, you know, I'm, I'm going to speculate it creates a deeper understanding on our side of the table as well. So thank you.
And Sue, thanks for having us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your, your, well, you, Dave. Amanda, you don't get the joy of being here, so maybe next.
It is beautiful there, so I agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Thanks a lot. Enjoy the rest of your evening. See ya. Okay, we're at the public comment period and there's no one in the gallery, so I'm going to move on. And I am going to move to the public hearing. And with respect to those at the table, I am going to read this. So this public hearing is convened in accordance with the Local Government Act to allow the public to make representations to council regarding the proposed bylaw. There is one bylaw to be considered at this public hearing. Bylaw number 1991 to amend the Town of Smithers zoning bylaw number 1987 by adding a site-specific regulation to the R7 rural residential hobby farm zone as necessary to permit the continued operation of a short-term rental or STR unit from the secondary suite contained within the principal building located at 2534 Ford Road without meeting the principal residence requirements. I'm going to call for speakers. Before I do, I'm just going to check the legality. Is it a requirement that I read all of this?
Yes, mayor.
Okay, I'm going to carry on. I thought so. Every one of you present who believes your interests to be affected by their proposed bylaw will be given an opportunity to be heard by council. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making their views known. However, please restrict your comments to the content in the proposed bylaw. If you would like to speak, please come to the delegation table and begin by stating your name and address. Members of council may ask you questions following your presentation. However, the function of council at a public hearing is to listen rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. After this public hearing is closed, council may, without further notice, adopt or defeat the bylaw or alter it and then adopt the bylaw. Council's discussion regarding the proposed bylaw will occur under Section 16 of this evening's agenda. At this point, I'm going to call for submissions. I'm going to call for speakers for the first time. I'm going to call for speakers for the third time. And for the third and final time. And I, having no speakers, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed at 7:03 PM. Well, good. Okay. Thanks, council, for running along with that. So we are at the minutes, item 81. And just for approval, please, a motion to approve. Councillor Patterson, Councillor Elliott, any errors or omissions? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. We have no items to be released from the pub. Councillor Ray, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just wanted to ask, because we made motions from both the delegations last time, just if staff had a, an approximate timeline so we could communicate that back to the proponents?
We're just sort of reflecting on the moment, a minute. So we'll just provide staff a minute to sort of orient unless Mr. Shorter is ready.
Sorry, I should have asked this question.
That's okay. That's okay. We'll just take a minute.
I'll let my colleagues correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe that we're going to be bringing Ranger Park back to the committee of the whole in, coming up in August. And we are going to bring the softball requests back.
Thank you. Scheduled for the August 12th, regular council meeting.
Thanks for that.
Sorry to put you on the spot. Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you, folks. Okay. Oh, yes.
Thank you very much, Mayor Atro. I'm pleased to report that found the right piece of paper. Thank you, mayor. I'm very pleased to report that there was one motion that was released from the in-camera this evening, that being that Leanne Helkenberg was appointed to the Community Safety on Wellbeing, to the Select Committee on Community Safety and Wellbeing for a 10-month term expiring May 28, 2026.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. McKinley. It's a team approach. We work together. Alrighty. Wait for that sound. All right, now, I think we're heading into council reports. And first up would be councillor Beukman.
Thank you, Mayor Atro. Because I was on the road, I was unable to attend the chamber meeting on July the 15th. But I did take the time to meet with Sheena Miller the following day on July's, or June, July 16th, pardon me, just to touch base. And we had a good meeting together. I also visited the homeless encampment on Saturday morning after the fire had happened. And I just wanted to publicly express my appreciation for the work of the fire department, for the town staff who were on site on Saturday morning overseeing the cleanup and showing obvious concern for the residents of the encampment. And I also really appreciated the press release that was sent out that morning. And then yesterday I met with Tamara Gillis, pool manager. Her last day as pool manager will be August 22nd. And I felt it just important to sit down with her and express my appreciation for the work she's done. Tamara has been with the pool for 23 years and has done a wonderful job of being pool manager, in my opinion. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Beukman. Um, councillor Elliot?
Thank you, mayor. Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, councillor Leonard.
Some quick ones. July 1st, I attended the Canada Day celebrations. I wasn't, I was late for the last meeting, so couldn't communicate that then. I managed to avoid the rain. And it was great to see all the performers and just see people out celebrating. On July 14th, I attended the Riverside Campground with Mayor Atro and Mr. Dewar and Mr. George. And we toured the campground and with the manager and got an update on changes that she's made over the last couple of years. And a whole host of changes that she has on her wish list. So it was really great actually to, to do that. And I encourage my fellow councillors, if there's an opportunity to do it again, to do so. It was very informative. And then on Saturday, I was downtown to Main Street Market. And it was just nice to see the public out in, in the crowds that, that were, were out. It was very busy and lots of people. I ran into lots of people that I haven't seen in quite some time. So it was, it was really well attended and very nice. Despite the, the sad news of the encampment fire in the morning, it was just nice to see everybody out and celebrating.
Thanks, councillor Leonard. Councillor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor Atro. So for council's information, you'll see the minutes or lack thereof from the Select Committee on Community Safety and Wellbeing. I think just due to summer months, we didn't have quorum. But looking forward to giving a presentation to council as part of the terms of reference for the committee as the one-year update coming in the fall. And I just wanted to give a big thank you to all of our first responders in our community living so close to the fire hall and the hospital. Just, it's been quite busy the last even week. It just seems, yeah, there's just been a lot going on. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for the important work that you all do. That's all from me. Thank you.
Thanks for that, councillor Patterson. Councillor Raven?
So my report is in the agenda with one thing to actually be taken off. So on the 21st, we actually did not have the Splash Pad Advisory Committee meeting. I just had to submit my report beforehand, so I tried to look ahead. But yeah, so just a few members meant to come up with the terms of reference, but we will be having our first Splash Pad meeting soon. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things with the art gallery opening. It was really just incredible and the vibrancy that the gallery brings to the community is just fantastic. And echoing the thoughts about the Main Street market, it was so good to see downtown just full of hustle and bustle and just everyone getting out and about. And then also the Witsinkwood Community Forest, they did their checks that morning. So just a reminder that that community forest is so incredibly important that over $250,000 is being given out to local organizations, which is just incredible. And it's across the region and just such a range of organizations as well. So good work, everybody.
Thanks, councillor Raven. That's right.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the Main Street market and to recognize that, you know, if, if I hadn't known what happened at the encampment, town staff was downtown and it didn't look any different than if nothing had happened in the encampment. And a lot of the staff was involved in both incidents. So I want to give kudos to the staff for the professional manner in which that was handled and still able to give attention to the Main Street market. So thank you very much.
Thanks, councillor Ray. Maybe I'll just start where you folks have been, which is on the encampment fire and the recognition of those who worked hard. That call, as many emergencies calls do, went out early in the morning. And so, you know, it is those volunteers that respond. And I also want to acknowledge someone making a call. In my past life, one of the things I did work at was teaching first aid and talk about the importance and the most important is making the call. So someone was there and actually made the call. And then we had people respond to it. So people have acknowledged Smithers Fire, BC ambulance, volunteers, our staff. It took a lot of people to deal with that emergency, as it always does. And so, yeah, I think this is our organization. And so taking a moment to acknowledge our team who showed up. It is the weekend. Emergencies don't happen at convenient times. So that's great. We have a system that calls people in and people respond. And so we're grateful for that. And the community needs to know that as well. At the same time, acknowledging the volunteers in the community who came, some who are a part of organizations and some who aren't, that are just kind folks that recognize when something's happening and they show up. And also really wanted to acknowledge, you know, some of the organizations that came, and I'll miss some. So this is with risk, but for those that I saw. So there's Community Services, Zellcamp Friendship Center Society. I had another one and I've forgotten it, so I'm apologizing to those I missed. But also acknowledge like Babine Nation, Witsat, Office of the Witsotin, who came down. You know, there's, there's a lot of mystery when something happens, people trying to figure out what you need. But actually having people show up. But actually having people show up, you know, whether it's with a cup of coffee, a sandwich or a bottle of water, and then figuring out the next steps after that. I think there was a lot of gratitude. And a lot of, you know, figuring out how it went, including with folks here and somebody talked about it, like people were dealing with this and trying to set up downtown. So there was a lot of coming and going for folks. So amazing job under really terrible circumstances. And we are so fortunate that nobody passed away. Of course, there was an injury, which is terrible. But a situation like that could have been so much worse. So thanks to everyone who was there. Mr. Dewar was there as well. You know, I saw the folks that are on the table were out that day. So thank you for that. And then just other things generally in the last couple of weeks, something that was, you know, it is significant for our community and it was the official opening of the Dome Mountain Project. We hear a lot about mineral exploration in this community. And we hear a lot about the Golden Triangle and projects happening far away and on scale, Dome Mountain's pretty close. And so that will provide, as I was informed that day, 17 direct hires and about 100 indirect. That's a significant project for our community and it's close. And it has a long history here. So it was really nice to be able to attend that, see what it means and look the folks in the eyes who are going to be working there. So because I felt very fortunate being invited to go up. Some of the normal things that's happened in the last couple of weeks, Regional District of Auckland and Shaco, it scaled back for the summer. So we're just meeting once a month unless necessary. The local government associations had a common meeting. So as the rep for NCLGA met with all the local government associations, the presidents and not surprisingly, but the commonality there struck me as we talked about what's, what are we hearing at our meetings? And it was housing and homelessness and how do we pay for infrastructure? So that was interesting. And the other piece was how do we actually support the organizations? So we see at this table, the bill for the membership as everyone does, and it's always a point like, what should those rates be? But at the same time, organizations are all trying to figure out how do they assist with advocacy? So it was just interesting. The commonality, which shouldn't be a surprise, but somehow it always is. I was able to have a nice long chat with our acting detachment commander, Sergeant Law, just to sort of catch up and figure out, you know, how are things working at the detachment? Seems good so far. We've got some new folks in. And so it was just nice to have that time. Echo Counselor Leonard and thanks to Mr. George and Ms. Ness, but for taking us down to the campground. It was, Councilor Leonard talked about it, but there is an unbridled enthusiasm in our campground operator and it's pretty cool. So you could not help but be excited about the potential at the RV park. And it's beautiful. So thanks to the work staff who actually take that on. It was really cool. Had a meeting with a local resident who's concerned about the slowness of, I have to look it up every time, but Immigration, Refugees and Citizenship Canada, people are stuck in that system. And businesses here are starting to suffer from that as people's days end and they're not allowed to work anymore. So it was a pretty heart wrenching and I did, it's, it's not something we can really help with, but I can write a letter like anyone else can. So trying to help as best we can. I'm gonna come back to one thing. I am along with Counselor Ray and Counselor Patterson, there was a Fall Fair Management Committee yesterday. So we were there for that. So that went well. I mean, it's always, it's an interesting organization because there's so many people there that are trying to do good work. There's challenges between the organizations, but all in all, some pretty good stuff happens at the Fall Fairgrounds despite having organizations working on tight spaces. The further thanks to staff from Main Street Market. Rocked it out of the park, I think. Staff will like to hear this and not like to hear it. The request was, could you do it every Saturday? So take that back. And I think that's probably enough. So thanks, folks. Lots of good things happening. People do think it's quiet in the summer, but people are working pretty hard, keeping all the balls rolling. So thanks to everyone. I'll leave it there. Okay. We're going to move to the 14s. We have a report 14-1 from Mr. Lee. And this is with a recommendation for the Form and Character Development Permit Application for 3772 fourth app. If anyone wants to put on the floor, Counselor Bukama, you're moving.
I'm happy to move the staff recommendation.
And Counselor Patterson, I saw your hand seconding. Okay. It's on the floor. Any comments or questions? Counselor Bukama.
I've said it many a time, but whenever someone wants to beautify a local building, I am all for it. To me, it's a no brainer. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Bukama. I don't see any other hands. I'll call the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. 14-2, we have a report from Ms. Fidel, who is here with us. And we have the recommendation. Ms. Fidel, is there anything that you wanted to add? Okay. So the recommendation is here. Someone would like to move it. Counselor Raven moves. Counselor Elliott seconds. Discussion, folks. Not seeing any. I'm going to call the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Thank you for your work on that. That went pretty quick, but it didn't go pretty quick. We know that there was lots that went into it. So not skipping that part. Okay. And 14-3, this was the report I somehow lost out of my package. 14-3, the report from Ms. Chandran. And while I scramble for it, actually, just give me a sec. Let me grab it. Okay. Yeah, somehow I excluded that one from my binder here. So we do have the STR, the Short Term Rentals report from Ms. Chandran. And we've got recommendations there on our licensing options. Counselor Ray.
I'll move the full recommendation.
All the parts? Is that what you said? Okay, thank you. So second or Counselor Raven seconds. And discussion. Counselor Patterson.
Just a question, your worship through to staff. Do we have any idea of how many may need to be removed, if any, at this time?
Mr. Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Atrell. I believe it's listed on page three at the bottom, the bottom paragraph. Yeah, Ms. Chandran is updated. It's 14 have been approved. And there are eight that are actually still, eight applications that are still outstanding.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, your worship. So if I may, do we, I'm just trying to think through of like how we might be able, able to accommodate, recognizing that we have, and I appreciate how much work staff have, have gone to give people a buffer. I'm just curious, once we adopt this this evening, is there going to be sort of any immediate sort of penalty to those individuals or will there still continue to be some buffer? Or do we know that those individuals are likely just going to have to completely remove their rest here?
Ms. Rowland.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Atrell. Yeah, no penalties will be, or fines will be served at this time. This is just simply to, if, if the, if the operators, STR operators have not applied for their business license before August 1st and staff will report that to the province and then they will be removed, their listings will be removed from the platforms. Even then, there's no fines adjudicated to the operators. They just will not be able to advertise on the short-term rental platforms until such time that they renew their, they'll actually have to reapply with the province for their short-term rental license and then still apply for the town business license.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? That's right.
I just wanted to say I kind of skimmed over the recommendation. And then when I read the report, it very, very, very clearly laid out. I had picked option two before I went back up to the recommendation. And so kudos to, to Ms. Chandran for a good report.
Thanks, Councilor Ray. Last call. Counselor Bukama.
A question through to Mr. Allen. If they were removed from the provincial registry, could they still in a roundabout way operate as an STR? Or would they get caught? Thank you through, through Mayor Atrell to Counselor Bukama. The province has established an STR branch that does look at the, you know, what, which short-term rentals are operating in the province. They can advertise elsewhere, as long as they're not advertising on one of the platforms, they can still operate. But as far as local government, you know, legal operations in a local government, they still require their business license. So we still have eight applications that have not achieved the full requirements for their, you know, local business license at least. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, not seeing any other hands. All in favor. Opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Okay, 15-1, report from Ms. LeBanc, who is with us. And it is a report for information. And if there is questions or anything you wanted to add, Ms. LeBanc?
The only thing I'll add is I know it has been a bit of time before a lot of this, there's been a bit of a lag. So I'm here to answer any questions and provide any clarity. I hope I outlined it all in the report, but it is something that I want everyone to be excited about and feel comfortable with. So I'm happy to offer any clarifications.
Thank you. Anyone from council? Oh, that's funny. We get you here. We're not going to ask you anything. We'll wait till you're not here and then we'll have a lot of questions. You did outline it in the report, but I'll just, maybe I'll just say the thing that has been troubling me, you know, and I, I think as time goes by, sorry, maybe I'll go back to the beginning. I think it was for me, the opportunity to have engagement, even though I recall the rationale for not doing it. At some point, I would love to see that. I think, you know, there's an opportunity for a brand to be loved by a community. So it's more than a corporate look. It's a community identity. So I'm attached to that notion. That said, that's not what this was. And I have noticed, you know, kind of a favorable acceptance as well. So that is also kind of mollified how I was feeling about the whole thing. So I appreciate the work that has gone into it and your willingness to sort of kind of see how we go and to carve out some space for the things that were called the heritage pieces. So thank you for that. Do I see a hand here?
So are, I know we have the new logo. But are we still partially using the Elphinhorn Man as well? I'm a little confused about that. I know we talked about it at the last time we are going through this all. And I tried to figure it out, reading through this, but I wasn't 100% sure.
Ms. LeBanc.
So I thank you through the chair to Counselor Buko. We did kind of have some clarification on that. We are still using the Elphinhorn logo as a legacy logo. It is going to be focused a lot of on our like internal documents that kind of form the record. Those are kind of where we are leaving Elphinhorn Man, that logo, where the new logo will be more of the outward facing documents.
Okay, thanks for that answer. I'm kind of like Mayor Atrell. I still love the Elphinhorn Man. So I'm glad he's not disappearing completely. Thank you.
Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, worship. Just a question. I was curious, like in preparation for our one-year report from the Select Committee on Community Safety and Wellbeing, if we're allowed to use the brand on our presentation. And my second question is, will people be able to purchase swag, like stickers or shirts or things that have the Tona Smithers on it? And when can we do that? Thank you.
Ms. LeBanc.
Thank you through the chair to Counselor Patterson. Yes, the committee, first to answer your first question, the committee may use the new branding if they choose so. We do have PowerPoint presentation templates and document template, should you wish to use those. For brand sway, we are working on that. We are kind of, you know, just solidifying everything. And then we will be looking at doing some, some items with economic development.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay. Well, thank you for joining us this evening and for your work on this. Okay, so now we're up to, this is the evening of the multiple Sams. So we're at 15-2 and we have a report from Ms. Fadel, Sam Fadel, who is here. And over you.
Thank you, here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. All of you guys know, I am Sami Chupadell, the Climate Action Specialist for the Tona Smithers. I'm here to share the progress on the first quarter of 2025, what we did to reduce our emissions, both climate resilience and trying to stay on track with the goals set in our Community Energy and Emissions Plan. I do have a presentation to. Thank you. Can I get the next slide, please? So we're going to start with monitoring. So we, we were monitoring and reporting. We do report to three programs so far. For Recycle BC, we are, we, sorry, we we reported 97.5 tons of carbon dioxide emissions worth of reporting. And this includes all of the emissions that occurred through curbside pickups and when we brought the recycling to WIT SAT and back. And for the local government climate action program, we mostly it's responsible for the towns. Sorry, I'm just a little bit composed. We mostly do the climate, we mostly, sorry. Yeah.
You know what?
Okay, so the LG cap program is the traditional, traditional services that the town provides to the community. We did, we did report 669.89 tons of carbon dioxide emissions. 10% of these, we contracted it out to other companies to do most. This is mostly our operational and maintenance things. For buildings, for buildings, we report the electricity, the natural gas, all of that. It increased by 8%, but we did decrease our fuel emissions by 3%. And also the contracted services emissions went up by 21%, but the contracted service emissions mostly reflects all of the maintenance work that is done by the town within the year. We also report to the low carbon fuel standards. This year, we reported five units. This is, so these are carbon credits that are generated by town-operated EV charging stations that we have. We can report it to the province and then generate credits from it. These, they have, they have a market and currently they're selling for 495 per unit in 2025. Can we get the next slide, please? So this is a detailed breakdown of the LG cap reporting that we done. So our mostly, our emission sources were our biggest ones were the purchased fuel, as we can see here, and the natural gas, as we can see there. So essentially, all of the fossil fuels we're using, right? So the purchased fuel is whatever diesel, gasoline, we use, natural gas is what we use to heat up the buildings. And further breaking down the mobile emission sources, our biggest emission sources are the heavy-duty diesel vehicles we have, like the heavy-duty machinery, all of our tractors. And, sorry, our fire truck, sorry, couldn't find the word, our fire trucks and our garbage trucks and the light duty trucks are all of our, let's say, the Ford F-150s and stuff. And of course, the off-road vehicles are mostly our heavy-duty machineries. Can you get the next slide, please? Um, within the transportation, our EV pilot is doing really well. Staff seem to love the Volkswagen ID.4 we have. As of this morning, we have 5,800 kilometers on it. I think this definitely reflects the amount of trust and trust and confidence we are building towards EV vehicles. It has also reduced 2.4 tons of carbon dioxide emissions. So the 3% that has decreased with the fleet, about 2 or 2.5% of that. I would say it is as a result of us using this Volkswagen ID.4 instead of the Dodge Grand Caravan we had been using. Another notable thing about transportation is we're doing a hydrogen units pilot at Public Works. This is in a partnership agreement with the city of Prince Rupert and organized through Innovate BC, thanks to the Economic Development Officer. She was our main contact from our, on our behalf. So we are going to put this So we are gonna put this in one of our biggest, highest emitters. That's the plan. So how hydrogen units decrease our fuel efficiency is they just increase the efficiency of combustion. So we're just, we have, it's gonna, like, the target is about thirty percent fuel reduction. Can you get the next slide, please? And for our community transportation, we are building a another, we are installing another EV charging station. And this is gonna be at the Civic Center. We're still waiting for the Fonda confirmation, but the budget that's gonna go from Tana Smithers side, we've got it already approved for twenty twenty-five budget. And there's, there's, there's more needs for level three infrastructure present. We do have BC Hydro ones. But, yeah, people seem to like the level three ones more because they charge their cars faster. And one of our biggest projects we've completed this quarter was the GHG reduction pathway study. We did a full condition assessment, and we looked at all of the energy used among eighteen of our building portfolio of the town. It helps us, it helps us in asset management. It helps us be informed, you know, capital planning. So this is a plan that's tailored to the Tana Smithers, that's tailored to our buildings. We looked at all of the buildings. What, what's happening, all of the equipments in the building, and we have a tailored program which helps us stay on target for our GHG reduction targets for twenty thirty and twenty fifty. Can you get the next slide, please? So in that energy audit, one of the one of the most important thing we had noted for Town Hall was how our heating system was the biggest emitter. So we just awarded the tender this, this meeting. So we are doing a upgrade on the town's HVAC system. There is a lot of estimated emission reduction, about twelve tons of carbon dioxide emissions. Because it is, it is gonna be an eighty percent reduction, especially for, just for Town Hall. And three point five of the total building portfolio for us. So this, this is great, because this is also one of the first impactful projects that we're gonna do, because we were doing a lot of studies, just to figure out what we should do first, and this is, this project is gonna help us figure out and learn lessons, so we can apply to like next projects that we're gonna do. And another big project we are just starting is, it, it is, it does not fall under the sea, but it is an adaptation and resilience project. We are going to do a natural assets inventory, and we're gonna do a condition assessment. We're gonna do climate projections. We're gonna evaluate what's going on, and we're also gonna get a blueprint for how we can integrate this into town's asset management plan. And we also completed organics diversion feasibility study this quarter. It was presented on March twenty-five council meeting. There is a grant that has been identified that covers two-thirds of eligible project costs. Mostly infrastructure and curbside processing. So our main focus right now, staff is trying to find a land we can do, we can use a project for, and some cost for covering the one-third of the project cost, and looking for regional collaboration on this. So community involvement has been in the heart of climate action in Smithers this quarter. We represented we represented Tana Smithers at the North Kent Forum that happened in Prince George. It was a regional sort of program where all of represented from different municipalities came in and utilities companies and other professionals who work in the climate, within the climate action space in northern BC. So it was great because north is very different, and we need to like find a community and then like find our voice. So there can be like, for example, when, when we did the Clean BC Review, staff was also highly engaged with that one. And the main voice was north is different, so we want like some some rules or some projects or some programming that's tailored to unique needs of the north. We also, in the, in the same line, we also did a public engagement in February. It was Northern Energy Dialogues. It was a collaboration with the local Smithers Climate Action. It is our local climate action group, and it was also like it was, it was a part of a broader research program with, by University of Victoria and University of Northern British Columbia. There were thirty-seven participants involved, and it, I think it went really great. Another thing we did was the Earth Day Workshop. This was held at the Smithers Public Library, and it was themed on saving money and environment. It starts at home, so we got some tips and tricks on how we can save mostly our energy consumption and water consumption and stuff like that at home. One, another community project is we have launched a thermal sensor landing program. When we were launching it, we called up an energy auditor who performed the blower door test. It blower door test is figuring out how much air is leaking out from your building, so it was great. So with the thermal sensor landing program, we partnered with Smithers Public Library and the Berkeley Valley Tool Library. So there are one thermal sensor at each place, and community members will be able to borrow it and check if there's any leakages happening in their homes. Thank you so much for your time and attention. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Ms. Fadel. Questions from council or comments? Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, worship. Great presentation. There's so much on the go, reflecting back on early days in our term. There didn't seem to be a lot that I can remember, but just the work that yourself and your predecessor, who's on maternity leave, have been doing, and just keeping at it. Yeah, I'm just really, really impressed at how much work has gotten done in such a short period of time. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor Patterson. Anyone else? Counselor Raven?
I really enjoyed the breakdown of what the HVAC switchover will do, because I know that we've always heard about that there will be savings, but it was just really good to see the numbers on that, so thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm just gonna echo that. And there was a curiosity that when we're talking about the buildings, I'm assuming that's in the results of the building audit will keep coming as we pick up a project. Okay, so that's great. Made me think about some of the buildings. And I also just wanted to acknowledge your time with us is coming, drawing to a close. So it's really great that you're able to come and do this presentation to us, so we have a chance to, you know, kind of hear what you've been up to. And I just wanted to comment as well on your representation for this community. I did attend some of the things you were talking about, and you represented us really well. So just wanted to say thank you in public for that, you know, at the Energy Dialogues and at the Forum of Prince George. Though, thanks for holding this community up while you're here, and we definitely wish you all the best, and hopefully you'll come visit us again once you make your way from this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Everybody has been like really kind, and, yeah. Yeah, I can't appreciate Smithers enough. I've, I've been here for a year, but, yeah, it just, it just went by really quick.
Well, it's in your blood. Now you'll have to come back and visit. There's no getting out of here once you're here, so. Okay, so thanks for your work. Appreciate it. Okay, council, a few more things we need to do. So sixteen one, we've got bylaw nineteen ninety-one, and it is here for third reading. So I'm gonna take that motion, Counselor Raven. Somebody else? Counselor Leonard? And any discussion? Seeing that, oh, Counselor Elliot.
I'm not sure. Maybe there's a name spelling mistake. Is it Mackenzie? Maybe correct me if I'm wrong. Is that the right spelling?
You are correct. So it's on the, it's just on the status sheet?
Yeah, on the first page. I just realized that there.
Yeah.
Few minutes ago.
Okay, thanks for that, for the connection. It won't affect what we're doing, though, since it is just the status page, so thank you, though. Reading all the details. And ready for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried unanimously. Okay, and we're just gonna move right to the eight teams. So there's a list of correspondence there, and then just call them out, whatever you'd like to talk about, if there's anything there. So it's gonna be quiet tonight, Counselor Ray?
Eighteen two.
Thank you. No one wants to talk about eighteen one, which is really our list. Let's just go to eighteen two, then, Counselor Ray?
I, I was just wondering if staff had any comments on minimum distancing between cannabis retail stores. It seems a little odd. We have distances from schools and stuff, but I don't really I don't really see a difficulty in having two right next door to each other, or three. The market will sort that out. I was just wondering if staff had a comment on whether that was a concern in our community.
Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mary Rachel. Yeah, that, that's been addressed, Counselor Ray, in our policy as far as spacing of the yeah, it's actually not a requirement, the spacing of the, the outlets. The retail outlets, but we do have the hundred and fifty millimeter spacing from any schools properties, so that, that's been upheld in our, our current locations. What this is really focused at is the province is looking to local government feedback on opening up license, event licenses, similar to liquor licenses for special events to permit cannabis at events as well. And staff have requested a meeting on August fourth with the provincial staff, so it'll just, just at this point be a staff-to-staff discussion, but things that our staff are planning to talk about will be how to control odors at events with cannabis licenses, that type of thing. But, yeah, if council had any other concerns, they could let staff know before that meeting.
Thanks, Mr. Allen, Counselor Ray.
So on that, I just find it odd. The WCB has requirements for keeping cigarette smoke thirty meters or ten meters away from entrances to doors, yet we're going to allow people to consume cannabis and have smoke. Unless it's only going to be edible products, but that, that would be my concern more than anything. You know, if we're worried about the odor, it's coming from the smoke, then that just seems awfully odd to me.
Thanks, Counselor Ray. Yeah, I, I gotta say, I echo that, you know, I think about trends in buildings that are scent-free. So when you go to places, you know, people don't wear perfume anymore. You think about what goes into your hair. And yet, with some, you know, be they smoking products or vaping products, the scents are pretty overwhelming. So it does seem like that's becoming, you know, a matter of comfort for others, that it can be unpleasant outside, and it certainly could be unpleasant inside. I'm not sure how that can be conveyed, or if it's even something that's going to be considered. But yeah, I mean, I just think about an event, if we were to have an event, as we've had, you know, downtown or Bubble Square, that the pleasure of others can certainly be affected by scent, and if you have a scent sensitivity, your health might be affected by that as well. So if you could take care of that, Mr. Allen, that would be great. Thank you. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mary Rachel. I'll admit, being on maternity leave, when I'm walking down Main Street quite often with Casey, it does bother me significantly when people are either using tobacco or cannabis on Main Street, just because of his tiny little lungs. So I guess one of my questions would be through to staff, no matter what the province does, do we still have the ability to develop a policy to support what our community may or may not want with respect to distances and where they could consume? Either?
Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mary Rachel. At this point, it is strictly a provincial regulation. The town would have to develop its own bylaw to enact any enforcement of, of that locally or within the town itself. So we don't have that in place at this point.
Just for clarity, I'm I'm not sure if this is what Counselor Patterson asked, is could we? So it sounds like we could?
Yes, it's available. Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Anything else? Okay, anything else out of the eight teams? I'm not seeing anything. A cautious pause, and then I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Raven, second or Counselor Bukama, all in favor? We are adjourned. Thanks, folks.